Okay. Uh, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, June twenty eighth, two thousand twenty four. Now time is seven oh one P M. We begin with the pledge allegiance, please.
For the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, any public comments?
No.
Public comments? Anybody on there? Okay. Uh, correspondence?
No.
Okay. I move that we approve the Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes from June fourth, two thousand twenty four. All here? Any questions? More discussion about the minutes? See none? All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Any votes? Motion carries. Uh, first likely report, I'll try to be somewhat brief. I was gonna go through the whole World Cafe report tonight, but we have a printer issue going on in there, so you guys lucked out. Um, first up, I kinda wanna give everybody a little bit of a heads up, something I've been working on. Um, we've had a license request uh, for the property, uh, but next to Edison Kitchen, as you know, they have outdoor dining. During the pandemic, there's been a lot of outdoor dining, you know, kind of allowed all over the place. And at one point, they were trying to get an easement for that area because it's actually town property. We're working on a license kinda situation. Um, right now, we're just making sure there's ADA access and all that, but I just wanna make sure everybody's aware of that because the same is true for other places in town, including, you know, we have folks eating at P T Barnham Square. So we're trying to come up with, you know, what our plan will be as a town and how we how we handle that, make sure that we're covered by insurance and all that. So I kinda wanted you to give a both a heads up. That's something that's been going on. We, um, we'll be meeting, I'll be meeting with, uh, the Chair of, um, Board of Finance and a couple of, and the Co-Care, and I think the Democratic Representative. We're talking about some capital stuff coming up. And then I'll come back to the Board with what we what we discussed. Obviously, we can't make it in one big meeting. Uh, there are gonna be a few capital on recurring items. I'll probably come, we're gonna add a few elections already on the agenda, but there'll be a couple of other things coming that'll probably be, you know, pretty hot. Um, we've got a couple on here, which is the decorative light poles, and I think we have the oh, Town Hall Murphy Management Controls, and we'll talk about those in a minute. But just so you know, there's, um, uh, some fuel pump software that will be happening pretty quick. Let's see, here, Stone Hill Fire Department, we already did that one. See, we actually, the the big one coming up is gonna be a forty-six stack, it's not all this uh, copy I have there. We have the Public Works Director. We have a forty-six thousand dollar thing coming up to remove a tank from the Berry School. Um, it was emptied of oil, and so it's something that, you know, coming up that we're gonna have to look at right away. You know, this is the chance to get rid of it. So there'll be a number of capital things coming, and we'll we'll address more of those this week, but I mean, I think we're meeting Thursday, right?
Thursday.
Yeah, okay, so I wanna give you a heads up on that. And the last thing I'm gonna, I'm gonna push, I was gonna do the World Cafe Report. Um, we'll do that when we we did first meeting in July. If that's okay, maybe, guys. Um, otherwise, uh, I don't know if there's any else that's popped up this week. Now, the other thing we're gonna, we might add to an executive session, though, talk to the attorney about it here in just a second. So that's my report. Uh, any questions? Okay. Uh, as far as new business, I'd like to go ahead and add a couple of things to the agenda, if we could, on your business. So, um, following the, uh, consideration approval of tax refunds, um, we're gonna add a couple of items. Uh, first is consideration of sewer and water easement for Plum, uh, Forty-Nine Plum Trees Road. It's forty-two, forty-two Plum Trees Road, thanks. Do on here. Uh, second, and I'm, do I have to do these? We'll do these individually. All in favor adding to the agenda, say aye. Or second, please. Sorry, motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Next up, uh, I'll add a, um, consideration of the agreement with Augustana Holmes. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Say aye. And the last item for the agenda is to appoint Special Counsel for the sale of Nineteen Trow Bridge in Clark Park. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Okay, all three are adding to the agenda. Fabulous. Okay, so first on the new business, um, I'll I'll make the motion and we can have discussion. Uh, I move that we, uh, we recommend to the Board of Finance, uh, the decorative streetlight pole replacement for downtown of P T Barnham Square, the amount of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars to come from C N R. You have a second?
Second.
So what this is, um, this has been on the docket for a period of time. The reason we're moving on it now without going to Thursday's capital meeting is we need to order it by the end of the month, or it's an extra grant out of our pocket. So it really just makes sense to just push it along. What's happened is, um, on the north side of P T Barnham Square, those of you may have noticed, there's a actually, we call one of those, uh, sign things sticking over a broken pedestal that was hit by a car quite some time ago. What we're doing now is we're actually purchasing, uh, two, I'm sorry, yeah, two new poles. That'll go in the front part of P T Barnham, and then the old two poles, one will be placed where the old one was, and one will be held in reserve because they're a different type. Right, we can't match them up, so this way, it's the most economical way and to fix it. Again, it's gonna just be an extra grant, so we need to move forward with it now.
And was there an insurance claim on the other one for the car accident?
My under, my understanding that that, I guess, there wasn't. Um, maybe you remember, this was way before my time, and for whatever reason, there wasn't. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I think, yeah, I don't know if there was. I don't remember seeing a loser report before.
Yeah. I'd asked that last year, and nobody seemed to know that there ever was a claim. Never. I mean, obviously, it should have been done back in the time.
No, we've done it before. Just for pace.
So, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so I, I think we're kind of at the point where it's been a, been a long time and kinda have to fix it at this point. So, uh, any further thoughts or discussion regarding? Okay, um, with that, I'll try your minds. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, can I answer that? And this here, since that front, so we found that that price goes up five percent of
Right.
End of the month. Um, so it's gonna be special?
So I, I think, well, I, I think after this, we'll have to discuss whether or not they do it as special or like where we go with it. Um, so let's discuss after the meeting.
Okay.
And I'm willing to go on, you know, give you, you know, say five percent, boys.
Okay, yeah. Um, okay, um, next up, uh, it's, it's another one for Skinner. So I move that we, um, we replaced the Town Hall Emergency Management Controls in the amount of two twenty-three thousand dollars. Uh, excuse me, let me rephrase this. I recommend.
Should say energy.
Oh, okay. Oh, I know what that is. I so read it. Okay, let's try this again. Uh, I move, we recommend to the Board of Finance to, uh, appropriate the sum of twenty-three thousand dollars for their, uh, replacement of the Town Hall Energy Management Controls uh, to come from C N R. Do I have a second? Um, now, actually, we have the Board of Finance Chair here, so we can obviously talk about this and see what's going on. Um, oh, actually, you, you wanna go ahead and cover it there, Director of Public Works?
Yeah, it's my turn. Um, so, I understand this is, um, I understand this is basically the final step in the energy management project for my time. You know, so, um, basically, and I'm not an expert on all this H B A C control stuff, but essentially, what we have is a two-part, uh, request here, you know, the poll for nineteen thousand five hundred and fifty from S and E for programming and controls for the thirteen variable design uh, for the hydraulic pumps, uh, which is where the hot water, which is the, so the, uh, buildings needed by a hot water. Um, then we have, uh, two thousand two hundred and twenty quote from kinetic combustion operation for the installment of differential pressure control sensors and the pipe is for the hydraulic pump. And I'm, I added about five percent contingency for that, although I I'm not expecting anything to go along. I just wanted to have a little bit of proper sort of requests for twenty-three, although I'm doubtful, so I'm doubtful, so I'm, it's all for. So essentially, I spoke to Greg Robles, Greg Robles, or it basically allows the system to run automatically and optimize the maximum. So it's not like, for us that, it's more about having a plate and run most optimal. That's why it's more of an image.
Yeah.
You, you don't have the ability on your current building control system to have set points and everything?
Uh, right, that, yeah, there's set points on it.
There's set points?
This is really for the very drives.
Okay.
You know, so you know, if you're just slowing, you're slowing your speed, your pumps are caught, and you're about water.
And the temperature, does it modulate that for outside temperature?
And of course, yeah.
What type of savings do they anticipate? Did they give you an idea?
I don't know. I mean, that was done.
This is all part of the Ameresco project?
That was a winner. Yeah.
That was a real winner.
There was a clarification on the first page here, Eric, about the V F Ds. Uh, those have been already installed, haven't they?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't wanna be a stick in the mud, but I'd like to see some estimate for what the cost savings are by, you know, installing this, you know, it's kinda like when you do an indirect water tank, you know, you're gonna save ten percent roughly on your, your oil bill. I mean, what is the, I understand what you're saying, but like, what is true cost savings?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. It would be assessing me.
And this is just for the heating season, right? Nothing to do with AC.
Right.
Right.
That's why we're doing it now is to get ready for the fall. Yeah. The only reason we brought it up now is because
I mean, I'm not against it, but I don't, you know, we're talking about a minimal savings. Is it worth investing all the money? And how long is the license good for and all that on it? Like, how often do you have to renew the license with the, uh, building controls?
Yeah, I'm not sure. To do, we will kind of, you're like the contract.
No, but you paper lacing like computers and stuff.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, the computer side, I don't know what, how long would they analyze it?
So I was, I was under the impression this was like, like already part of the big plan that you guys had in place.
Yeah, I am a rest though.
Right.
So why wasn't it done when the whole project was done and finding, you know, and built into the project?
I don't, I don't.
It's probably said, how long's it been on the capital? Report or the plan, you know? Probably some period of time. What would, uh, what would be the impact if we go ahead and delay to the next meeting so we can find out if there actually was any information provided about savings per?
We, we can try to.
Would that put us behind, do you think, for the fall? And do we just push back one?
Another two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah.
Probably not. You do need to get it, we'll give you for the fall, it's just, more about the contractor's schedule, make sure we get.
Right, to get them on board. Would you like to, uh, push it there?
I would, I would just like some more information. You know, you could just email it to us. I mean, you don't have to come to the next meeting. We know what the deal is. We just wanna
Sure.
I just wanna know, you know, what is the cost savings gonna be? Like I said, it's gonna end up being, uh, a thousand years. Is it worth spending twenty-something thousand on it, on equipment that's gonna have to be replaced anyway?
Well, to your point, it could be buried in all the Ameresco stuff.
Right, so that's all. Like I said, you don't have to come back to the next meeting, just email us information, uh, because
We're there too, the Thursday that people talk about.
We don't have a meeting on Thursday.
No, we, we, you wanna talk about the priorities? Sure, yeah, we, of course.
Mary Olson, it's, thank you, Mary.
And I'll, I'll second that motion. So we have a motion to table, um, do, wait, have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carries. Okay. Um, okay, next up, and now I'm gonna just, uh, before I go through the numbers, I'm gonna say, um, I'd like to go ahead and discuss the approval of your replacement utility body on the mechanics truck. My understanding is the same, I got an email from earlier the week, it's rusted through and
Yeah, I mean, yeah, there's like the doors inside the body are going, it's a steel body. That was originally, that's not the first truck it's been on. It was on a, on a ninety-eight Chevy service truck prior to that.
Mm-hmm.
And then we took it out and went, we replaced it, uh, for chassis. Um, you know, nowadays, you can get a good aluminum filled utility body, and they're, and they're reasonably priced, too. They're not much more than, they're not much more than steel. Fifteen hundred bucks, you know, about subcharge, I don't know, so. Um, you know, this one here, you know, to open up the doors, you gotta put a floor jack underneath the body, jack it up a little bit, and then they need to It's, it's pretty bad.
It's, it's
Was this on your capital replacement at any point?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so you've been waiting to do this project for a while.
So, all right.
I'm sorry, just what, what year did it?
And, and, and the chair recognizes the
First truck it was on was like ninety years Chevy and the chassis.
I just wanted to make sure.
It's a two thousand fourteen, fourteen.
We see.
Right, so the body's like twenty-five years old.
Yeah. Okay.
They're aluminum, again, aluminum, but now, you know, these are aluminum bodies, so they should be able to run a couple of more chests. You can probably mention this. Why, because chat, whether what chest, so it takes.
Okay, um, so with that, um, I'll make a motion that we recommend to the Board of Finance, uh, the purchase of the replacement utility body on the mechanic's truck and then uh, for the total of seventeen thousand, should say not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars.
Second.
Any more questions? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye. Just watch back and up.
Motion carries.
Right, I was, I was, let me drive it.
It was running long. Little, little won't rat out, but it does a lot easier.
Very expensive rig, yeah.
Cost me almost four thousand for a deer that ran on the side of my truck. Aluminum, they couldn't pull it. It's crazy.
Okay, so next up, um, make sure I get this right, uh, I move to authorize Daniel Lee Carter's First Selectment Town of Bethel to execute the master municipal agreement for construction projects. Uh, I wanna make sure it says right, um, contingent on Town, uh, Town Attorney Group. Second. So what this is, is, um, basically every ten years, we have a agreement that we sign with this, so it's, uh, you know, it's a hundred and some pages. I, I think Mary sent it to you guys. Right now, we just have a single, that's a single port aid. I just wanna make sure they have approval to execute it. Uh, really, it's pretty straightforward, but it's basically isn't a lot of changes. Yeah, it was emailed to us, so. Okay, so any, any further discussion? Okay, with that said, uh, uh, did I have a second?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, was that all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I move that we approve the tax refunds, the amount of one thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-one cents to the overpayment of taxes.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
With that, I'll try your minds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, um, so we'll go ahead and we'll, uh, we'll invite Attorney Olson to, we're gonna talk about the, uh, sewer and water easement for forty-two Plum Trees Road. Do I can I give any comments? You got your maps here.
This is what we discussed last.
So it's actually not.
We discussed electrical.
Oh, yeah, we're doing sewer.
Way more complicated.
This is sewer and water, which is very simple. Um, serves the proposed eleven units, six of which are built. Will be closing on this at some point. Sewer and water have been installed and inspected by the town. This is the preliminary easement map. It's preliminary only because the surveyor wants to make sure everybody approves it, decides it. Um, so the request for you is to refer this to Planning and Zoning Commission under eight twenty-four for their review. When it comes back from them. Your next day.
What else is for the P U C?
Yeah, so what, so if P U Cs, if they've already done it, we still just have limits at the map, right?
They, well, they also, they've done other inspections and testing, and they're okay with what they've installed and what's going to be in the easement.
Okay, so, um, I'll make the first motion. Um, I move to approve the sewer and water easement map for forty-two Plum Trees Road subject to referral of Planning and Zoning Commission for a report under Connecticut General Statute eight dash twenty-four and further subject to referral to the Public Utilities Commission for satisfactory inspections of water and sewer structures within easement area and, uh, the document subject to Town Attorney Group. So that's the first motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I move to authorize Daniel Lee Carter's First Selectment Town of Bethel to execute subject to Town Council review, the easement agreement on behalf of the Town of Bethel on the conditions of both planning and zoning and the Public Utilities Commission report favorably regarding the All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Sorry to make you wait.
No worries.
We'll go down there next time. Um, next up, um, I guess that's right. Okay, so what we have, there's been a, um, a history, basically a cooperation agreement between Augustana Home and the town for some period of time. As you know, uh, Bethel Housing Authority is going to take over the congregant housing, and in that, there have basically been, um, you know, basically a tax deferment kind of thing. So what we're looking at is the ability to, you know, tweak the language at this point. If you wanna go into it anymore, Mel, you can give that one.
I would face up.
Yeah.
Yes, so there has been an agreement since the early eighties, and the agreement is that in lieu of paying taxes and utility charges a percentage of the rentals from the units, um, is paid to the town, and the rest that would have been paid at market rate is an abatement. So each year, the First Selectmen has been coming to, I guess, or probably maybe the Tax collector, asking for approval of the abatement um, because it is low income housing and because it's a somewhat more encourage. So, um, now that there's gonna be a sale to, um, whatever the entity is that's that will have the authority, I forget, but it's a small conglomerate corporation, thank you. Uh, they want to assign, the seller wants to, our diocese, um, wants to assign, um, the agreement relative to this tax and utility, um, understanding, which is a cooperation agreement, to the new owners. So, um, the, when you're signing an agreement, you do an assignment, an assumption agreement, and the new buyer assumes the obligations under the agreement. And, um, so we're just fine tuning that language, and also, we just wanna be sure that all of the parties are on the agreement that need to be, in particular, uh, I'm thinking the state of Connecticut perhaps needs to be applied to this agreement because it will apply to the original agreement. Um, so we're just looking to fine tune this and make sure that the language is where it should be and appropriate parties are signing it. And then that would enable the successor, the new buyer, to step in the shoes of Augustana with the same arrangement with the town.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm, I have a question.
You're welcome.
Did you put a motion?
We have put a motion, we put it up for discussion first, which is okay.
Um, do we charge people or the Housing Authority for sewer and water in, uh, Reynolds Ridge right now?
I don't know if the town actually charges them.
I haven't looked at the agreement with Reynolds Ridge. I, I believe there are similar agreements.
Yeah.
Um, because I saw in the minutes, um, they were referring to maybe what had been done at Augustana would be done for Phineas Park.
We do, we do tax.
Maybe some similar types of agreements, but I'm not sure. I haven't looked at that one.
I've seen each year the tax abatement done for, uh, Reynolds Ridge, Phineas, and the housing, hungry housing.
So, so this is just for, it's not for sewer and water, it's for just the tax.
Just tax.
Yeah.
I'm not sure whether it includes, see, a regional agreement said, um, utility charges as well.
How much would the round totally give us? What's the percentage?
It's ten percent.
And do we have to total like this?
Uh, I don't know. Uh, wait a second, I may have that with me. Um, I believe the total rent, if I just look at the most recent report. Um, so the most recent report I have from two thousand twenty-two, uh, looks like the total rent was sixty-four thousand, seven fifty-three. So the ten percent to the town was six thousand, one hundred and seventy-five. And I'm not certain whether it's just taxes or includes, um, this is saying ten percent due as real estate tax. I'm not sure whether that's just taxes. I have to um, look at the breakdown more carefully, because I believe the agreement said utility charges as well as taxes.
By signing this agreement, though, it does not run with the life of the property?
Um, well, this is an assignment.
I understand.
So it's, it's really just saying the agreement that Augustana had is now going to the new owner, and you're assuming the obligations of it, and they have the benefits of that contract as well.
And when does the contract expire?
Um, it, there is no, um, definite expiration date.
And I'm assuming there's language in the contract that requires, uh, to continue
It's
the same use as it is now.
So you can modify it.
I mean, I'm, I'm not trying, again, I'm not a stick in the mud. I just, you know, I, I, I don't want this.
It says that there, it says it can't be abrogated, so it can't be terminated so long as there is an outstanding indebtedness or any balance of indebtedness on a town of such a project or, um, for as long as the title to the project is held by the developer, which is Augustana Homes or some other public body or governmental agency in the state of Connecticut, authorized by one of the developing administration, public housing for the elderly.
I guess I'm saying they can't change this.
Uh,
That's all I wanna know, is that they can't change the use of, you know, they can't.
Or you have a legal agreement that they did, because that, that it really seems to be tied to the fact that it is used for this purpose. So it's based on, in fact, they did a partial release of a portion of the property uh, in two thousand sixteen, I believe, Peter, when they peeled off parcel one, which was no longer, I believe, not constant housing any longer, right? Just went to market rate.
Right, so just to be clear, I represent Augustana Homes.
I got that.
Uh, that is affiliated with the Roman Catholic Diocese of Great Britain. It is a separate legal entity. Um, I represented R M S Bethel in two thousand sixteen, when it purchased the front part of Augustan. And that has gone to essentially a subsidized, um, project. They, there, there's a project they suck shake funding for that. Um, and so, but it's owned by a private oligarch, so there's no need for this type of a public corporation.
Is that why the agreement? There was, I knew there was a
That was the reason.
Right, such a good point. Apartment's released because of it, right?
So we're just, I just wanna make sure we're
The original, the original cooperation agreement that we're looking at here is not a model of good draftship. Um, I'll just say that right at the front. Um, but, you know, it is what it is, and it's been in the land records since then, in eighty-two, eighty-one, or for something when they, when they built the, the town of your housing in the first place. Um, it refers to state programs by statute number, and my understanding is there's still indebtedness under those programs um, that the Housing Authority is assuming and taking with its rights. Um, so, the agreement, as far as we can tell, remains in full force of effect. Um, my concern, well, Augustana Homes doesn't really care long-term whether the agreement remains or not. But the Bethel Housing Authority definitely cares. They do want it in place, and so, um, you know, to the extent this runs with the land, it runs with the land. To the extent it doesn't, we thought it was best to do a formal assignment document approved by Board of Selectmen to make it clear to everybody that we all agree this is um, so, okay, that's the request.
And, and this is a different, now, this is, this isn't Bethel Housing Authority, technically, it's Bethel Congregate.
The Bethel Housing Authority is not taking title to the property or has the Housing Authority. Um, it is, it has formed a separate non-stock corporation, the officers of which, by my understanding, are the same as the officers of the Housing Authority. Um, I, I haven't seen those bylaws, I don't know if that mechanism works, but the president is the same as the Chair of the Housing Authority, he's president.
Okay.
Um, and so that's the entity they're taking title in, I'm taking a wide decision to think.
Okay.
But these were just saying, we wanted to just check and
Yeah.
I will finalize the agreement signing, but there is some urgency to sign it quickly as the training program, since they're closing on Monday, but, um,
So, I've been trying to get people to do something about this for about six months.
Yeah.
And, yeah, now we're closing Monday.
Okay, that's what it works. So
It has to be done.
I, I move, I move to authorize Daniel Lee Carter's First Selectment Town of Bethel to execute the cooperation agreement between, uh, the Town of Bethel and the Bethel Congregate Housing, subject to Town Attorney approval.
So. Yeah, just to make sure.
Well, you can suggest, I'll have a comment.
Suggesting you might amend that to say that you're executing the assignment and assumption agreement.
Assignment and assumption.
Yes.
Got it.
Regarding the cooperation agreement.
Oh, second. And take that as a friendly amendment. Outstanding. Do I, do you second it? All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Um, next up on the agenda, um, I move to appoint Marty Lawler as Special Counsel for Okay, so I move to appoint Marty Lawler as Special Counsel for the sale of Nineteen Trow Bridge in Clark Park due to conflict of interest with County Attorney.
Second.
Any instructions?
Um, is, is nineteen one of the business or is
Is, is nineteen one of the pieces, or is that another piece that we saw?
Well, not really worried about it, it's all right.
Yeah, but we can't have
Yeah, I just, I was curious if it was another piece.
I understand. All right, I have no problem wanting Marty to be there.
Did I, did you say second?
Not yet.
I did, I said
Any further discussions? All in favor, say aye? Aye. Obceptions or, no, motion carries. Okay, let's see here. Uh, Mel, question?
Yes.
Can I add to the agenda, uh, discussion of a personal matter in our executive session?
Yes.
Right, so uh, I move that we uh go into executive session for the discussion of the sale of one fifty nine Greenwood Avenue. Um, and the discussion of a personal issue. For the first part, I'd like to invite in the uh Chair of the Board of Finance, Nick Ellis, our attorney. The first one is one fifty nine, and then we'll do the personnel after that. I'd like to invite in uh Melanie Bryan and uh our Secretary, Mary Churchill. So Mary, if you could stop recording. First off, do I have a second? All in favor, say aye? Aye. She carries. Mind grabbing the door, Mary?
I got it.
You got it, thanks. Uh, okay. Okay, so there we've returned from the executive session, the time is now seven forty one PM. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
And all in favor, say aye? Aye. And we stand adjourned at seven forty one. Thank you, everybody.